All right, we're gonna begin tonight's meeting with reorganization. We're gonna elect our officers as well as appoint a liaison to the Shade Tree Commission. First and foremost, can I get a motion to nominate the Chair for the Planning Commission in 2024?
I'll make motion to nominate you.
I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. I really appreciate the vote and the vote of confidence. So, in terms of Vice Chair, before we speak to that position, I'd like to thank Matt Golis for his many years of service in the last year as Vice Chair. This year, I'd like to nominate Lane Vines for Vice Chair. Commissioner Vines. He served this commission since January 2019, and that's a long time. He's in his sixth year of service. And in his spare time, and what I mean by that is time away from the Planning Commission, Lane is actually a seasoned litigator. He has an extensive background in business, government, and accounting of all things. He's a proud graduate of Villanova Law School and currently serves as Senior Counsel at Berger Montague in Philadelphia. So with that being said, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lane Vines for Vice Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'll call a vote. All in favor for Commissioner Vines as Vice Chair?
Aye.
All right, unanimous as well. Thank you. Congratulations on your appointment, Commissioner Vines. What year of Villanova Law was the question?
So it's 1997.
Let the record indicate, 1997. Wow. All right, so the last nomination we're gonna have, as you guys know, we appoint a liaison to the Shade Tree Commission. That helps us stay abreast of any development, and really, it's our look inside protecting the environmental assets of this township. And our most important asset is preserving our tree canopy. And Commissioner Matt Golis, he's served faithfully in that capacity for many, many years. I think that job was really created for him, and ever since Commissioner Kunda handed him the keys many moons ago. So I want to renominate Commissioner Golis for that position and urge you to reappoint him for this year. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, second by Matt. Any other nominations? All right, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with Commissioner Golis abstaining? Congratulations, Commissioner Golis.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get rolling with the agenda, I'd like to take a few moments to offer some thanks. As you may have noticed, there's an empty chair here tonight, and I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Stephen Varanhorst, he's concluded his second term of service to the Planning Commission. For the past eight years, and eight years is a long time to serve on one board, our board really benefited greatly from Commissioner Varanhorst's input, his insight as an architect working on mixed-use institutional, commercial, and master planning projects, really nationwide. Commissioner Varanhorst's dry wit, his impeccable taste, his meticulous attention to detail, especially when it comes to the aesthetics of the developments, they'll really be missed. And I have to say that our board will be much poorer for Commissioner Varanhorst's absence here. So please, he's not here, but he'll be very happy if you could join me in the round of applause to thank Commissioner Varanhorst for his service. And one year from now, he can be back, as Commissioner Kunda clarified, so. That being said, with his departure, we now have a vacancy here on the Planning Commission. Even though I'm one of the newer members, my enthusiasm for this board is very, very strong, so I want to make sure that potential applicants are aware of that. If you want to be at the forefront of development in Radnor, if you wanna have the inside track and have your voice really heard in this forum, this is really the place for you. It's the only place for you. And whether you're an expert in the field of municipal planning, like Commissioner Woo Kim, or real estate development, like Commissioner David Nat, or you just love the Radnor Code and the MPC, like me, there's a place for you here. So if you'd like to volunteer, please contact Peggy Hagan or Bill White. They'll shepherd you through the process and do it soon. Our seats do fill up, so. All right, back to business. Approval of minutes, December 4th, meeting. I'm sure you've read them. Can I get them? Motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Brubaker. All in favor?
I'd like to actually make a motion to approve with the adjustment that, I believe it says Board of Commissioners at the top, and it should say Planning Commission.
Okay, there we go. Good catch. So let's redo the motion to approve with that adjustment.
Yes.
All right, second, seconded by Brubaker again. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you so much. All right, normally, this is the time I would invite public to make comment on any item that's on our agenda or off. I don't believe there's any public here, so we'll just move on to our next item. Mr. Norrisini, can you lead us into the two sewage facilities planning modules? What do we need to do here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So 317 Ivan, that's the subdivision next door. By virtue of the existing house, they have one EDU. They need one more. Because of the connection management plan in Delaware County, they're forced to go through the sewage facility planning module process, which would normally not be done, but that's the situation we're in. So it's rather perfunctory. We're asking the Planning Commission to approve it. It's been, it's gone through our Act 537 manager Patty Kaufman. All is good, and from there, we go to the Board of Commissioners. The same applies to 150-168 Lancaster. Their sewage facilities planning module, that was to adjust for the number of units that were there. Again, it's been submitted, it's been reviewed, and we would ask for two separate motions and votes for each, you know, for each, but that's where they stand.
All right, so it sounds good. I'll begin with calling a vote for 317 Ivan Sewage Facilities Module. So I'd like to make a motion to approve that item. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Commissioner Brubaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the 150 to 168 Lancaster Avenue Sewage Facilities Module. Can I get a second? Brad Brubaker, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous as well. All right, sounds good. Thank you for that. All right, moving on. Item, next item, Application 209748, 150 to 168 East Lancaster Avenue, looking for final land development recommendation for approval.
Nick Canello for the applicant. Happy New Year. I know all of you actually have seen this plan multiple times. There's no new members, so I think you're very familiar with it. If the Chair prefers, I can go through the review letters. I know there's a couple items that didn't really change, but were added by the Board of Commissioners. One, remember there was an issue, not really an issue, but an alternative stormwater, two alternative stormwater management plans. One was under the building, one was in the right-of-way, which would capture more stormwater from different areas surrounding the site. The Board of Commissioners preferred the one, the second item, which was to have the stormwater management plan in the right-of-way. Mr. Rice has already mentioned, there would be an easement agreement that would put the responsibilities on the developer for maintaining it as well as for liability purposes. The other item was that the applicant would agree to additional right-of-way, although I don't think that's gonna be needed by the Board of Commissioners because of this easement agreement that we would have. And I also noticed that in the Gilmore letter, there is a number of intersection improvements that the applicant agreed to do, and that's in the general comments, number three, lists items A to E, which the applicant would perform as far as road and sidewalk improvements. As to the, the review letters themselves, one item was the parking facility design, which the applicant says would be indicated on the architectural plans. I checked with the applicant today, and those parking sizes will comply with 255-80B1 of the Saldo, which requires nine-by-18-foot parking spaces in the WBOD, and additionally, there would be a 24-foot aisle, which also complies with the requirements in the Saldo. As to the other requirements, you may recall that one of the waivers that was granted for preliminary was that, it was waived that the requirement for showing existing features within 500 feet of the site. We have provided aerial photographs, so they are available to see where they would be. The other comments are highway occupancy permit, which of course would be required anyway, additional right-of-way, which if the, if the Board of Commissioners would require it, the applicant is amenable to including it. There's items regarding crosswalks and curb ramps, which also the applicant agrees to install. As I mentioned, there's items regarding improvements to the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and Loewella, which the applicant would also agree to perform. As to the Gannett letter, he mentions tire bumpers along Lancaster Avenue, which would be installed. There is an item regarding shade tree. My understanding is the landscape plan has one less tree showing than the land development plan, so that would have to be added to the landscape plan. I believe they do have to go back to Shade Tree for final approval on it, Matt?
Yeah, I think we just gave you preliminary.
Right. So they would have to go back to Shade Tree for final approval on that. The next Shade Tree meeting would be?
Third week.
Okay. And hopefully, can we have that in by then? And the other items are the standard central water system has to be designed with adequate capacity, the payments for, for the rec thing, which the applicant is amenable to. And as I mentioned, the stormwater system would be placed in the right-of-way to accommodate other properties in the area as well as this property, and I believe would be roof drains? Is that my understanding?
Green roof.
Green roof.
Okay. Who took the tire bumpers?
Yes, the tire bumpers would be installed.
Okay.
Correct?
Somebody take them? The letter said, stated that they?
Yeah, I know, they were in there, then they were gone, according to the letter.
All right. I appreciate your sense of humor. So it sounds like with respect to stormwater, the choice has been made, you're pretty much, it will comply on everything else?
That's correct.
Commissioners, what questions do you have? All right, Mr. Phillips, anything to add?
No, as long as they're gonna, will comply with all of the items in the letter, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, we'll condition that. Mr. Drummond?
Same thing Roger just mentioned, they said they will comply with all the items in the letter, that should be good.
All right, public comment? Any ones? Commissioner Nat?
Yeah, I just have one question, just for curiosity. For the existing retail tenants, what's the plan for them? Are they on short-term leases right now, or will they be coming back?
I believe they are on short-term leases, and I, but go ahead.
They're period on as they're expiring. So some of the tents have already moved out into new spaces, and we're working with the other ones too.
Can you go up to the mic, please?
So what is your, so what's the, I'm just curious, so what's the whole timing of the project before, you know, once you put shovel, shovel and ground to the point where you believe you'll have C of O? What's your total timing and toward the point where that retail space will be re-leased, you know, once you obviously construct?
And state your name before you answer that for the?
My name's Tom Borghetti. I'm a Development Manager for Berger Communities.
Thank you.
Our hopeful construction timeline would be, you know, 12 to 18 months for, for completion, and, you know, depending on how quickly, you know, we get approvals and architectures completed.
Okay. And then at that point, you'll start really looking to release the, the ground floor retail?
Yeah, we'll be in discussions with, you know, tenants as we start constructing the space, 'cause maybe we can do some of the construction as we're doing everything else. But we do not have any tenants right now lined up for the space.
Sure, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, and any other questions, Commissioners? I don't believe that we had public comment when I called for it. So I would like to make a motion to recommend final land development approval conditioned on the Gilmore and Gannett letters. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, second by Golis. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous with Kunda abstaining. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, conditional use application, 204228 Stratford Ave, Hamilton Estate. While y'all are sitting up, I'd like to involve the solicitor for just one minute. Mr. Rice, could you define to us what we're looking at today? This is obviously a conditional use matter. Define for us what conditional use is, what type of use would be subject to this, and in the context of the Planning Commission, what's our role this evening? What are we looking for? And what are some possible outcomes for the applicant tonight?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Conditional uses could be any kind of use, but it's defined in your zoning ordinance in this particular case under the density modification provisions. Density modification provisions in the Township Zoning Ordinance provide for certain residential uses of different densities depending on the zoning district. So what you have with this application is a density modification plan showing a number of townhomes and other amenities. The zoning code, under the conditional use provisions, requires, this is 280-136, at least 30 days prior to the date of the hearing, copy of the application shall be furnished to the Planning Commission. Board shall request it. The Planning Commission submit recommendations to the Board for consideration, you know, prior to the Board reaching a final decision. So it's a, it's a zoning review to some extent, it's an overall general development review. It is not a land development application in front of you, which is a lot more detailed. There tends to be some bleeding over into land development issues when there's a conditional use, or a special exception type of an application that proposes residential development. So conditional uses are a type of permitted use, subject to conditions and requirements that are in your zoning ordinance, sort of like a special exception, it goes at the zoning hearing board. So this conditional use is in front of the Board of Commissioners, I think you probably all know that. There's been two hearings, there hasn't been any testimony presented yet. There are two more hearings scheduled for January 29th and January 31st. So there'll be hearings both of those nights, they've been advertised and scheduled, so the Board, you know, is looking for some recommendations from this Planning Commission on the application. But it's not really a land development review, it's sort of a scaled-down or enhanced zoning review, you know, beyond what the zoning officer would normally do in a permit application, because you have more detail here with this particular plan and this application. So that's how it works. It's something that's provided for in the MPC, could be any type of use. And the burden's on the applicant to prove compliance with the Township's ordinances. And that'll happen, not tonight, that'll happen in front of the Board of Commissioners during the course of those hearings. And they're evidentiary hearings, swearing of witnesses, cross-examination, you know, I expect we'll have more than two nights of testimony, you know, once it gets going. Any questions?
Yeah, so just in summary, and I really wanna spell this out in layman's terms, because some of our audience and perhaps some Commissioners aren't aware of what our burden here tonight is. We're looking for zoning compliance, essentially.
Primarily, yes.
Yeah, okay, got it. Commissioners, any questions for Solicitor before we get into it?
So what's the next step from our standpoint? I mean, right now, you're, we're being asked to approve on it for conditional use, right? So what's the next step?
Well, you're being asked to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. So after tonight, the Planning Commission is not involved with this application unless the Board of Commissioners approves the use, and then if that gets approved, then you will see a full-blown land development plan by the applicant. And that'll go through, you know, back and forth and back and forth with, with review letters that you see with, you know, like 150-168 Lancaster Avenue. So yeah, tonight is just a, a one-time recommendation per the Township Zoning Ordinance, and then you won't see it again unless it gets approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Now, we saw this several years ago, right?
That was a different application. Same property, different application.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the second conditional use application which has been filed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, floor is yours.
My name is George Brosman. I'm an attorney representing the owners of these properties, which is a trust. It's a trust of Dorance Hamilton, who died several years ago. She was a well-known figure in Radnor Township in the area. She had owned these properties in this trust for many years, but the applicant is the trust. Charlie Howder, who is here this evening, is working with the trust and helping them go through this process, along with me and the other experts that have been brought on for this. Thank you, John, for describing the process. We have a series of slides that are basically plans and other materials that relate to this application. I may ask Bern Panzak, who's the landscape architect, to help me navigate through this, through these slides, but I'll try to keep it to the higher level, the zoning things that Mr. Rice talked about. I wanted to start out with this slide. This is from the plan set. This is the existing conditions of the property. You're probably all familiar with it. It's got frontage on Stratford Avenue, which is on the top of the page, and frontage on Eagle Road, which is on the right of the page. To the bottom of the page is the Eagle Village Shops, which has some of the well-known stores in the township, the Little House Shop, the Valley Forge Flowers. Mrs. Hamilton had been involved with those over the years and involved with that shopping center, keeping it so nice the way that it is. There's one other property, Bern, if you could put the cursor on it, that's owned by the trust, that is separate, but it's being part of this application, it's called 18 Forest Lane. There's currently a single-family dwelling on that. Back to the main parcel, there, as you can see, there's several improvements on it. There's several large buildings. I believe there was a total of six dwelling units in these buildings, large greenhouses, things like that. There's three curb cuts to Stratford Avenue, three driveways, and one driveway to Eagle Road, and of course, 18 Forest Lane has its own driveway. So this is basically the way the property stands today. If we could go to the next slide, this is the cover sheet from the plan. It's got a location plan, maybe you could zoom into that a little bit, Bern, but the site that I just went over is shown in diagonal striping. You can see Stratford Ave to the right there, Eagle Road, to the right, I mean, Stratford Avenue there where the cursor is. And we've laid over the St. Honoray development that was recently approved and is under construction, that's, takes access primarily off of Eagle Road in the vicinity. And then if we could go to the next slide. This slide, Bern prepared, it's basically a hybrid slide. It shows the zoning in the area, the parcel, the tract is highlighted in orange, and that's the tract I went over. The green represents the R4 Residence District, that's the zone that the property is in. You can see that the Radnor Trudiffrin boundary line is just to the left here. There's a street called Grant Lane. There's a few properties in Radnor Township on Grant Lane that adjoin this site. They're in Radnor Township, everything to the west of Grant Lane, headed out toward the train station, is in Trudiffrin Township, Chester County. We view this site as transitional type of area. You know, you can see on here, and you're familiar with the area, it's one property removed from Lancaster Avenue, the main commercial artery of the township. It backs up to the Eagle Village Shops. It's close to the shopping center where the farmer's market is, and it's across Eagle Road from the Stratford Office Complex. And then to the north, to the top, are R4 Residence Neighborhoods. Right across the street has been the subject of two more recent subdivision plans, one of which was St. Honoray. You can see that, well, you can't see, but I'm gonna mention, there's no stormwater management facilities on these sites, and there's no sidewalks currently along the frontages of Eagle Road or Stratford Avenue. When these properties are put together, they combine to be about 7.4 acres in size. As I mentioned, they're zoned, the base zoning of R4, R4 District allows 7,000 square feet lots, which if you divided that into what an acre is, 43, 560, that is 62.2 lots per acre. As was indicated, a conditional use application was filed. In the R4 District, it says in 280-29B1, that townhomes can be permitted in the R4 District under the density modification provisions. In the R4 District, you need at least five acres, so this tract is about 7.4 acres or thereabouts. Density modification? Density modification is found at Article 19 of the zoning ordinance. There's sections 28090 to 280100. And it says in 28090 that the intent of density modification is to provide for modification of lot area, yard, and use requirements in certain zoning districts in connection with single-family development for the purpose of accomplishing various objectives. I'm not going to go through all the objectives, but one of the objectives is to encourage use of open space in new residential development. If the site were developed under the R4 District, 7,000 square foot lots, no open space would be required. Using the density modification to get the townhome use, there is a requirement for common open space. So that's one of the objectives of density modification. I was gonna go over the nature of conditional use, Mr. Rice did that. I was gonna point out also, which Mr. Rice did. If this got approved, we would have to file the full land development plan. There would also be NPDS permit required and sewer planning module through DEP. As one of the commissioners noted, I believe it was at the tail end of 2020, a prior application was presented to the Planning Commission, and that ended up unfortunately for the applicant being denied by the Board of Commissioners, and that is in the courts actually now. At the time, though, the Township Planning Commission had recommended approval. We did a similar review like this. And I'll just put that slide up for a moment. This was marked A7, that was the exhibit number, it was given in the last conditional use hearing. It's a, it was a plan for 41 townhome units. At the time, the ordinance required 15% common open space, so the common open space was provided in a community green area and then at other portions of the site. After the conditional use was denied, the township also modified the common open space requirements for density modification. That's found in 28091.a. The township increased the common open space requirements from 15 to 25%, and they addressed the issue of stormwater management in the open space. That's one of the issues on appeal on the other plan, but the new ordinance said that 10% of the area could be devoted to stormwater management. And the provision also says that the common open space should be contiguous unless otherwise approved by the Board of Commissioners. So that occurred in 2021. In May of 2023, then a new conditional use plan was filed, the one that's before you tonight. And we have one of the sheets out of the plan set for this. This was a Sheet 4 of the plan revisions that were submitted back in September in response to some reviews that we had received. This plan shows 38 townhomes, a centralized contiguous open space in the central green area. It's 25% as was required. You can see there's internal drive system. There are only two curb cuts or driveways now compared to the four that exist on the tract today. These are at Stratford Avenue. There'll be underground stormwater management, our engineer is here and could address that, although it is more of a land development issue. It's envisioned that this is gonna be planned community under the Planned Community Act of Pennsylvania. So that means there'll be a homeowners association. All the unit owners would be members, and HOA would be responsible for maintaining properly the, the common facilities, including the common open space, the internal drives, the underground stormwater management systems, basically everything except the units and the limited common elements applicable to the units. This plan has sidewalks being added along Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road. There's also a direct pedestrian connection added directly from the tract into the Eagle Village Shops. There's extensive stormwater management being provided on this site. The plans detail the zoning compliance, there's a zoning chart on the plan. The plans meet the density limit for the R4 District, which is 5.5 units to the acre. It comes in about 5.2 units to the acre. One of the comments, when the commissioners denied the prior conditional use, the big issues were, could the stormwater management be allowed underground under parts of the open space? And they also said that the community, the central area was the open space that they were recognizing. So the key differences between this plan and the last one that you recommended approval for, there's 38 townhomes instead of 41, there's 25% open space instead of 15, and all the open space has been put in the central green. You can see if you toggle back between the old plan and the new plan, the open space in the center is much larger. That's a result of two things, you know, one, the ordinance being changed to require 25% open space, and also the comment that was given by the commissioners the last time that that was where the open space was recognized. So that's the key difference between the, the two plans. We had a few other comments from the township. We haven't submitted a revision, we've been working on one. I'm not officially, it hasn't been submitted, so we're not asking you to review it, but I'll just mention the things we've been working on, if you can go to that slide.
Do, do we want to have that presented this evening?
We can skip it if you prefer.
I'd like to get some input from Mr. Norsini.
So Mr. Frumman, staff and, and our consultants only reviewed the original plan, the one submittal, and that, that's what's required under conditional use. So there are some notes in that, you know, items are provided. We have not reviewed that and will not review that until, as the solicitor said, it goes through, and it comes through on a land development standpoint. So the, the review letters you have are as far as we have and will go.
We can skip that if you prefer.
Mr. Brosnan, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, and I hope you understand, I, I just don't want you to present something that we can't really have input on, so I'd prefer if we leave it out. Although, I'm sure the, the commission is interested in hearing about the plan, but I'd rather, for the sake of time, not have it.
Yeah, well, we'll just skip that, there weren't, it was very minor.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention, and Charlie could talk about it, back in 2020, there were large amounts of community outreach, many meetings held, many things incorporated into the plan, particularly with enhancing the stormwater management systems. And then again, when this plan was filed, Charlie organized meetings with the neighbors and, you know, presented the new plans to them, and he's also discussed an alternative plan with them that I believe they prefer, but that has not been made part of the submission. But the applicant has willingness to do that plan if, if the township were to react favorably to it, but we're not planning on presenting that to you. But I wanted to make you aware that the applicant has been in touch with the neighbors, particularly the ones along the Grant Lane side. Those are really the only neighbors that are immediately, residential neighbors that are immediately contiguous. And then there's a gentleman who lives on Forest Lane, Mr. Shuda, and been working with them on stormwater and various other issues.
Mr. Brosnan, how many of those Grant, Grant Street, Grant?
Lane.
Lane, I'm sorry. Grant Lane neighbors, are there a handful, five?
One, two, three, four, five, plus Mr. Shuda's, whose address I believe is really Forest, but he's the one on the bottom there.
Gotcha, okay.
And then the, the Hamilton family owns that other piece there, and to the right is the Eagle Village Shops.
Okay, great, thank you.
We have our engineers here, we have our landscape architect, Charlie Howder is here, but that's pretty much our, our presentation in chief and summary of the application.
Okay, thank you. So just right off the bat, there's a couple of items that I had some questions on, and I'm sure the other commissioners do as well. In the review letters and in your response, there's some debate, and perhaps a little bit of back and forth on whether what Drive A or Road A, Road B, depending on how you depict it in the plans, what that is. So I believe our consultants determined that this was a private street. Your contention is that this is a private driveway. Could you weigh in on that argument? And of course, I'll follow up with our consultants as well on what their thoughts are.
Yeah, sure. The first thing I'd note on that, I believe those comments come up under the subdivision and land development heading of the reviews, so they're not directly part of the zoning. But having said that, we, we read every comment we get very carefully. These are very good consultants the township has. But it, we really comb through the code, and there's a specific provision, and this, and these are all in the subdivision and land development ordinance. There's provisions about streets, there's provisions about driveways, but there is a provision about, particularly about multifamily developments, which this is, and there's specific requirements for that. And it's clear from reading those, in my mind, that it's contemplated that these don't have to be streets, these are internal drive accesses, and we believe those street provisions of the subdivision and land development ordinance should not be applied to a project like this.
So what's the significance of Drive A and Drive B? Like, why, why is that bifurcated? I know I'm asking some of the saldo issues, but...
Why we call them that, I'm not sure.
I mean, it looks like just one, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Dave, do we have a, was it just for reference and a record, maybe? Just when we were testifying, maybe we, we'd talk about, and I think also because they were intersecting with Stratford, it was an easy way to refer to which one we were talking about. I don't think there's any other reason.
Sure. And then just to clarify the inquiry here, if, if your interpretation, let's say, was wrong, this brings up setback issues, right? So there, there is a zoning component to what I'm asking for. Maybe we can hear from our consultant. Mr. Norsini, what are your thoughts on this debate?
So with all due respect to Mr. Brosman, I do not concur. As he had showed on a previous slide, I look at as Road A and Road B. You know, his traffic consultants here, that has the ADT, could be considered a road. They will be listed as whatever drive, and they will each have specific home numbers off of Road A and Road B. And that, I'm not gonna get into the detail, as, as Mr. Brosman noted, but that, that's what I, my thought on it. And it was called out in our consultant's letter.
Sure, which is why I bring it up. Mr. Brosnan, any, anything further on that question?
Yeah, I, I agree, they would have an address and all of that, but I don't think that means, you know, legally they have to be a street. You know, there's a number of, any number of communities in the area in the township that are set up like this. I don't believe legally they have to be designated as streets under the ordinance. Now, when we got, I'm not, you know, this is without prejudice to my argument, but theoretically, when we got to land development, the applicant would have the right to request a waiver or modification from requirements regarding that. And if, if they chose to do that, that could be considered at that time, if any were needed.
Okay. My practical, my practical side on this would push me to want street, a street here, not a drive, because, you know, there's gonna be 20 Amazon trucks in here every day, there's gonna be FedEx, there's gonna be all sorts of in and out. I think there's a lot of, having this just exist as a, one big driveway, doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Yeah.
And I, and you know, and you can say letter of the law, but this is a lot of units for one big driveway.
Yeah, we did include in the plans the turning templates. They show that, you know, the fire trucks, the moving trucks, all of that will fit in there. And I don't believe there's an issue of constructing it, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, constructing it to the specifications of a street for strength and things like that. It's just, we didn't, we didn't know where the comments were going, if we were gonna get embroiled in these zoning disputes, as you said, about, well, are there more setbacks? Because this is going to be one lot, it's a planned community, that's how these are. These are gonna be units on one lot. You usually don't have setbacks like that, so I don't think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, we can build this to the...
You, you have the curbs, you have the width? So I guess my question to Mr. Brosman is, what, what was the change? Because on the previous plan, it was noted as a road or a street, and now on this plan, it's a drive.
Well, that was just the designation, we used the word road, we probably shouldn't have, and then the...
That designation carries weight, as we're discussing here now.
Well...
And to, just to go back to, that was just anecdotal about the mailboxes, the, you know, the specific addresses, but I believe, I know your traffic consultants here, the ADT of that road, street, you know, meets that of a street, not necessarily a drive. So that, I'm not gonna delve into it too deep, but those are my thoughts, and like I say, we bring it forth.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and we'd like to work this out with the township, and, you know, calling it road or drive, you know, when we got the comment and we made the response, you know, then we said we should call it a drive then.
Is it fair to say, and again, this is Planning Commission, we're advisory, this isn't a conditional use hearing, is it fair to say that by calling it a private drive, you're trying to avoid the setback issues that would normally be in, in a private road, required on a private road?
I wouldn't put it like that. You know, what I, as I said, you know, we didn't expect this comment, that you see the multifamily provisions, you have to have an access to this. I would call it, is there an unintended consequence that would be created if these are designated that way? You know, we don't have an issue with making it wide enough, having the proper radiuses, having the strength. We just don't wanna have, not that we're trying to avoid something, an unintended consequence of somebody saying, wow, there's a technicality here now. So that's really what we were, what we were thinking about.
So is, is it fair to say that this is a common driveway, common to the 38 townhomes?
That would be fair to say, it's a common facility.
Okay. So maybe this is a question for Mr. Norsini. How do you rationalize that? So let's say Mr. Brosnan's argument is correct, that it is a drive. How do we rationalize this common driveway that's common to these 38 dwellings when our code specifically prohibits that?
So, so I, I cannot rationalize that. All right, to me, it's, it's a private drive. I mean, it's a, to me, it's a, a private road, it's not a private drive. So I, that, I know we're not supposed to go too deep into saldo, but that's, that's my view. Based on our consultant's review, based on my review, based on the ADT, we do thank the applicant for building it to those specifications, that of a private street with the curbing and the proper width and the strength, as Mr. Brosman noted. So I, I can't rationalize the flip side of what Mr. Brosman's... So, I can't rationalize the flip side of what Mr. Brosman spoke.
So, it seems to me, Mr. Brosnan, not to guide you in a certain direction, but if you do call it a common driveway, you have other, other potential issues here.
Well, I would like to address that. I think you must, you're probably referring to, there is something about driveways in the, in the saldo and there's a limit on how many homes can be on that. Is that what you're talking about? In the multifamily provisions, 255-40, it specifically has its own provision on driveways at E. And it doesn't have those limits. So, I think those limits are for common driveways for, you know, a subdivision of land with multiple lots, like that St. Honoré across the street, for example. This is going to be one lot with units. And this section says that driveways shall be provided on the site where necessary for convenient access. Driveways shall enter public streets at safe locations. So, it's contemplated that these multifamily developments will have common driveways and the density is controlled by the zoning, how many units you can have and how many fit on the site. This provision doesn't have a limit on how many multifamily units you can have. So, I think that's really the provision that applies for these driveways.
Well, it doesn't have much of anything, does it, as far as limits or guidance?
It's got a lot of guidance. It doesn't limit the number of units.
Okay, got it.
Which I think is limited by other, other things in the ordinance.
So, when I look at the layout, you know, I, to me, a driveway is a small little pad that comes out from each unit. And so, that's my, that would be my definition of driveway, not the entire U. Is this going to be open to the public, this roadway, driveway, whatever? In other words, if you're coming down Strafford Avenue, can you drive, drive in?
You can. There'll be no prohibition. I don't believe it's going to be gated.
So, that's sort of not like a driveway?
It could be gated, if the township required it to be and didn't cause another problem, we could gate it.
I'm just looking at it saying, this looks like the road. And if we want to call it a driveway, why? So, I'm just confused by it.
Understood.
Mr. Brosnan, I have a different question. Your sidewalks, they're on the bottom of that U, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, without getting into the weeds too much, the individual driveways into the unit, will the cars parked in those individual driveways, will they overhang the sidewalk?
I don't know. We might have to ask Dave what the dimension there is. There was a comment about that.
It's not a dimension plan, I get that.
Right. Dave, do you know the, the distance? Say that again. This is Dave Sanders, the engineer from Site Engineering Concepts.
Yeah, so, one of the comments was to widen the sidewalk also. We had, originally had four feet, we made that five feet with this updated plan. And we were going to, it decreased it from an 18-foot length driveway down to a 17-foot driveway.
Okay.
So, a car can, a car can fit in there, I would say, without overhanging. A code-required space in Radnor is bigger than that, 20 feet, I believe. Our, our code-required parking is in the garage spaces. These are not the code-required parking, so, you know, we believe it's adequate. You know, and as Dave said, we had one more foot, but we opted to follow the recommendation to make the sidewalk five feet instead of four. We could tweak that.
Sure. And I know we're, we're very deep into it.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make sure that, we stated this for the record, but also, I would like some engineering input on that. What are our thoughts, regardless of what this is, private driveway, private road, whether we, the overhanging of the sidewalk can occur here?
Regarding the sidewalk, there is another option, that maybe the widening could go on the curb side versus the driveway side, that still get you at least 18 feet, which is, I do know, we do have some parking ordinances that do allow for 18 feet in the driveway. So, with that, that, that's one option, I think, that you guys could explore.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rowman. All right, final question, or final point, on setbacks. So, there is some debate in the review letters on the setbacks required by this development. So, you lean heavily into the density mod setback requirement, which is buildings within 40 feet of existing street right of way, which by your definition, I guess, would be what? Eagle Road and Strafford, and 25 feet from any adjacent property line.
Yes.
Which would be south of that U, right? As well as Grant Lane. And our consultants have a different definition. Mr. Norsini, could we discuss the difference in setbacks?
Sure. And I'm going to also, I agree 100% with our consultant's comments on this. And I understand where Mr. Brosman or Mr. Lambert was going, but I do concur with our consultant that 30 foot is the setback, it's not 25. And I, again, I understand, I don't concur with Mr. Brosman's response.
Mr. Brosnan?
This is, we're talking about the rear yard, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And... Gannett Fleming's comment on page, number four, right, on page?
So, this is the Gannett Fleming letter, September 18th, page two, paragraph, item four.
Right.
It specifically references 28097, which is yards as defined in the density modification section. Item three clearly states rear yard, the rear yard shall be 30 feet in all districts.
So, what we had put in the response letter was, if you go down to that same section, 28097 is yards for density modification. Section D says, if a tract is developed and operated under the Unit Property Act of PA or any similar form of development or operation, the minimum side yard distances between dwellings and groups of townhouses, and here's the key words, "in lieu of the foregoing yard requirements," shall be 30 feet in the R4 district. So, this is a planned community under the Planned Community Act. So, our response was that we thought D applied. And D says that, in lieu of those yard requirements, the foregoing yard requirements, which are in B, these other separation requirements are provided. Now, that said, I think we have 25 feet on both of the, there's two front yards, one on Strafford, one on Eagle. And we have 25 on each of the other lines. But that was our response to that.
And in response to that, I would specifically argue that that's intended for the internal setbacks between the buildings that are being constructed, not the side yard or the rear yard of the overall tract.
Okay, so...
Do you have a view, maybe your letter said it and I missed it, which one should be the rear yard? Maybe that was in your letter, I didn't...
That's pretty much your choice, actually.
Okay.
On a corner lot, you can typically designate it. If this was a single lot, it would be where the front of the house points, as simple as that.
Yeah.
This is a little more complicated than that.
So, you're saying one of them should be rear yard, 30 feet?
One of them needs to be a rear yard and that's 30 feet, correct.
Okay.
Chairman, I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Kim, please.
I understand that we're currently focused on conditional use for zoning. I would like to make a comment about the design, because I do feel like the design, zoning, this conversation, this dialogue we're having about whether this is a public street or an alley, I think they're all related. If I may speak about the design, is that...
I'm struggling with that, but go ahead. We'll see where it lands.
Sure, yeah. I, so, I, I'm coming from a place of making Radnor more walkable, more connected and the experience of Radnorites as they walk and bike and move about their neighborhoods to be pleasant. And to me, this development has two front doors, is Strafford and Eagle. None of the units you face, Strafford or Eagle. We're considering those to be front yards, but I don't see any unit facing them, unless I'm mistaken as to the way these townhouses are going to be designed. Perhaps they, they have two front doors. It doesn't look that way. I also wonder if, so that's one. I also wonder if the, and this was the comment that I made for St. Honoré, which was not heated, but, you know, it's fine, which is, you also have the opportunity here for better connectivity. If you have the property all the way to, I'm going to say Forest Lane, you can actually create a public street connecting Strafford to Forest Lane and actually line that street with actual fee simple lots, townhouses, so they don't have to be this planned unit development. And develop them like we do other parts of this neighborhood. It could be a little bit denser, but, you know, be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Would you like...
Yeah, feel free to respond.
Yeah, my name is Charlie Howder. I've met extensively with the neighbors that are, really, that have been our area of focus, which is the neighbors. If you recall, one of the first slides that we showed, the, the limit of the Radnor residents adjacent to this property is very narrow. It's basically just these folks that you see along Grant and the one lot on Forest. So, just to address that comment, I mean, I think I can speak on their behalf. They would be, the folks on Forest Lane would be vehemently against that concept of connecting Strafford and Forest. The concept of a, of a pass-through like that would be not something that I think they would, they would want to see. And then, with respect to the orientation of the townhomes and how, how they've been sort of directed inward, if you will, that again, is a direct function of discussions with the neighbors about, about essentially, when this is done, this will be somewhat invisible to the neighborhood. It'll be heavily buffered, heavily, you know, there's a, there's a very, very ample buffer along the Strafford side. I think that is all things that are specifically desired by the residents in this neighborhood. And I do note, just from an open space perspective, just to give it some perspective, because you start losing the sense of dimension, that in terms of quality open space, that center green that we're now looking at is the size, just to put it in perspective, it's the size of the Radnor middle school playing fields. It's enormous. I mean, it's, it's absolutely gargantuan by any, by, you know, by any stretch and certainly in the context of this maturely built-out neighborhood, it's just an enormous amount of green space. Again, that's what's required by the ordinance. And again, you know, I don't want to relitigate the discussion about the drive versus the road. But respectfully, to everyone that's appalled, I think that, to just, if I could just reiterate, I think what George and Mr. Norsini were saying. Look, I think the rule is that we're allowed to use drive, you know, drive, private driveway for purposes of planning. I think, to any rational reader of the, of the rule, I think you're allowed to do that. That said, I think, to your point, Mr. Golis, we're, though, though the technicality is, is that it's quote-unquote a driveway for nomenclature purposes, for practical purposes, it will act like a road. But also, to, I think George was a little bit at a loss, this will be a private road. So, I mean, can, the intent here, again, to your concern, is not to gate this community. That's not, that doesn't feel like anything like Radnor. And to be frank, I think there is hope, that there is continuity with the sidewalks and that this center green, while it will be private property, because it has to be, I think there's hope that it will be used as a common green for the neighborhood, that people will feel free to, you know, if they're walking along Strafford Avenue, that they, you know, dip into the property. There's also, though, I think there won't be roads connecting Eagle Village, you know, that, but, I think the idea of people, I was actually meeting with, with Joe Shuda today, who lives at the bottom, next to the one green lot, he lives to the left there on Forest. And we met at Eagle Village and he said, you know, there used to be a hole in the fence and I could walk through it and that got shut down, so now I have to kind of walk all the way around. You know, even though the, as the crow flies, the distance to Valley Forge Coffee Shop is short, he has to walk all the way around. And I think we hope through walking paths, to, more through pedestrian paths, to sort of create some connectivity, as we've shown here in a very rudimentary way, so that folks, you know, who live on Strafford can walk down these roads, take a path and go to Eagle Village or get, you know, make their way over to De Bruino Brothers or the farmer's market or whatever, you know, that might be. So, anyway, I rambled, but I just wanted to point out some of the, the feedback that we got from neighbors about, about that this, them wanting to see this as, as a, not, not having the street front. And one of the concerns about lotting this out, if you did it as single-family homes, is that, I mean, a single-family plan would just have, like, an enormous number of curb cuts on Strafford and on Eagle, which feels like a bad idea, both from a practical perspective and just from a disruption to, you know, the neighbors that live across the street. So, anyway, thanks for your attention.
In Fairfield, there's a dead end, right, or Forest?
Forest is a dead end.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and just, I would also note too, that that, that lot that is shown as green, the little tag lot, so, that's a single-family home, as is the one to the right of it. Those were two homes, just to give you some color on what's happening there. Two single-family homes that Mrs. Hamilton owned. She had caregivers and people that were in her, in her orbit that lived there. When she passed away, she gave them both life estates in the properties. The one that's shown in green, that person passed away, so that property is now available. The one to the right of it, the woman that lives there is elderly. But the idea with the one shown in green is really to have made that almost like an offering to the Forest Lane folks, who are attached to this property, but in a tangential way because of the, of the way that it deadends. But it was an offering in that it allows us the opportunity to do additional stormwater management in that space. And it's all, which will all be underground, so it'll really present forever as a lawn, you know, in the middle of that neighborhood, which is just, you know, an additional bit of open space of open space and amplified stormwater management, which the folks on, on Forest, I think, really could benefit from. You know, I think they will benefit, as will the Grant Lane folks enormously, from, you know, the 100-year storm system that this property would construct as part of the development.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on the, the comment about if you line Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road with single-family homes, there'll be a lot of curb cuts. I'm actually not envisioning that, and I think we need to, I'm challenging you to kind of rethink the prototype here, because these are townhouses where you just, you know, the garage is the predominant elevation on the front facade, but what if we actually add homes where the garage is not the predominant front elevation, and the garage is behind the house, and we kind of think of a model where you can come in through an alleyway, so you don't have to have curb cuts on the major streets, you just have to have one or two to get into that alley-served feature? I mean, a lot of places are doing this, you know, it's, it's walkability, it promotes walkability.
Yeah.
I, just to be clear, I love seeing this type of housing in Radnor, I think it's needed. I, I think that is what we, as just communities, we need to think more of a missing-middle type housing, which we don't have enough of. I just think that we can maybe try some other design approaches.
Well, and again, this is, when I look at this, it's, it's, it's thought out, but it's, it's very blocky in its presentation. It doesn't give you a lot of color on the, on the units and the style of the units. You know, and I think that comes down to whether people live kind of out front, or they live out back. So if you do the rear-entry alley approach, they're kind of living out the front of their house. It feels like a lot of people increasingly like to live out the back of their house, because it gives them maybe more privacy, you know, even in a context like this, they can create, excuse me, they can create more, you know, sequestered areas. So, yeah, I hear what you're saying, certainly from a, from a aesthetic frontage point of view, it's nice to have that drive-facing, drive-facing front facade, and have it present more village-like. But making the trade between sort of where people want their sort of outdoor, private space, you know, in this case, they would be kind of living out the back. And obviously, the folks that have the interior units, you know, have the biggest backyard in, in the history of the world with that center, with that center green. And, you know, the hope too, is that, you know, others that don't back up to that, you know, will obviously be able to use it as well for recreation and dog-walking and things like that.
One question I have is that with the sidewalks, and going to your point, the way I'm kind of looking at this is from a connectivity, from just that whole area where you can make it more walkable. Because right now, you really can't walk along Eagle Road, say, from Stratford all the way up towards Lancaster. And then, I don't know, I can't remember what it looks like on Stratford Avenue as you go towards the, the train station. But big-picture-wise, my thought would be, how do you connect that where, you know, arguably, hopefully, people will take the train, and maybe the idea is that if you could live here, one of the reasons why it's desirable here, is because I don't need a car. So I kind of look at it as there's 38 units, 38, I figure maybe everyone's going to have two cars. So 38 times two, that's what, 78? If I can't do it, yeah, 78. Six, thank you, 76 cars.
Two people have three cars.
Yeah, that's late for me. That's a lot of cars going back and forth on Stratford Avenue. And so I just kind of look at the idea, is that how do you connect it all together? So if it is walkable, so the question I have in a long-winded way, is that you're going to be proposing to install sidewalks. So the sidewalks will be all along Eagle, from the intersection of Stratford and Eagle, all the way up to Lancaster, is that correct?
We won't, we won't get as, as far as Lancaster, because our property ends.
Oh, right by.
And, and then Eagle Village starts.
Okay.
But there are.
There are sidewalks there, okay, but you will connect it.
Pick up.
So what about on Stratford? So you will be putting sidewalks in from Eagle all the way down to Grant Lane, is that?
Correct. Well, to the, to the end of our property, and then.
All right.
And then our property ends.
And so what, what is, and I, I gotta drive there, maybe on my way home, but, so, from like Grant Lane, or right before Grant Lane, where your property ends, is there a sidewalk all the way going down towards the train station?
There is not. That's also Tridifferent Township.
Yep.
So that is something that I know people are in favor of, because there are a lot of folks that utilize that train station. And I agree with you. I think that, well, to Mr., to Mr. Kim's point about this type of housing, you know, I think this type of housing will attract a certain type of homeowner that wants to take advantage of all those things, that, that wants to live here, because on a day-and-doubt basis, between DeBruno Brothers, the Farmer's Market, Eagle Village.
Well, and you're not that far from North Wayne Avenue.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, you could walk down West Avenue, yeah, which is, which is a great, easy walk. And, and the train. And so, you know, I don't know how, if that's within our purview, but I think, because it's, it's another, you know, it's not our property, and it's, it's in another township and county, but certainly, look, certainly our interest is in creating as much pedestrian fluidity, because that's, I think, from a, just to be candid, from a selling perspective, you know, that's why you want to live here.
So do you need to have any approval process from Tridifferent, since you're right up against it, or anything like that? No?
No.
Even from stormwater?
No.
No?
No.
Any other questions? Commissioner Vines?
I'm just looking at the, where Drive A connects with Drive B, and it looks like a really sharp turn, as opposed to the other side, which is, you know, much more angled. I mean, for starters, does that have any impact on the ability of, you know, of a fire truck, or other type of vehicle to, to round that?
I'm assuming, I'll, I'll speak on behalf of our engineers, who I'm, I'm sure, in our submitted plans, they did all the turning radius calculations, and I think the answer is that tractor trailers and fire trucks can make that turn. It does look.
Looks very sharp.
It, it looks sharp, as it relates to the other sweeping turn, but I, I think as our, our submitted plans show, that it still meets the, meets the requirements to be able to make that turn for safety vehicles, as well as.
Excuse me, George, can you pull up Sheet 4?
Bernie, could you go to Sheet 4? Sheet 4 of the plan set?
Of the plan set that was submitted for, for this.
Might be the previous one, Bernie?
I think you're looking at Sheet 6, I believe.
Original submission, Sheet 4. Set, Sheet 7, okay. There we go. And then. It's the other way. Keep going, two more. Is that the one you wanted, Bernie?
Yeah, this, this shows the turning movements of, of the trucks. And while we're here, George, can you outline for the board what is the required open space and where it's provided on this?
Yeah, sure. So the required open space, as I mentioned, with the, the ordinance that was adopted, is 25%. And although you could see from the prior graphic, we have a lot of other green area, but this graphic here is highlighted in green, is what we were counting as the common open It showed 28%. It was, there was a comment that we counted too much stormwater underneath, and a revision that was submitted addressed that. So we believe we meet the 25% requirement, and no more than 10% of stormwater underneath the open space.
Can, while we're also on here, can you also discuss what limitations will be put on those homes that are, that are adjacent to the open space, with restrictions of decks and patios and et cetera?
Yeah, I believe, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, the footprints that are shown, like the brown units, for example, 21, 22, 23, I believe the intent is everything occurs in that footprint, that's the place for a deck or a patio. We submitted with the conditional use application the draft Plan Community Declaration, and the open space will be, you know, notes on a recorded plan, and the Plan Community Declaration will be recorded to make it clear that that is open space, required common open space, and the landowners can't build things in it.
So this whole thing will be, all the open space will be controlled by, like, what, an HOA?
Yes.
And so, so will this be open to the public, or will this be something like in other parts of the township where open space became private space?
Yeah.
Where we're not allowed to walk on it, because you have security or someone screaming at you?
As Charlie indicated, you know, under the ordinance, it's common open space, it does not have to be public, so this is private. Currently, there's no plans to fence it off or gate it off. There's no plans to prohibit people, but it won't be technically open to the public.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? So I think the two big elephants in the room here are, is the question of the setbacks, and whether this is an internal driveway or private street, right? And I think, you know, just to recap, the internal driveway or private street argument, it's sort of damned if you do, damned if you don't. You have issues potentially with zoning or SALDO. If you call it a private driveway, you have setback issues if it becomes a private street. And, you know, to me, I just feel like those issues are, need to be resolved before we move further. With respect to the setbacks, and I think we heard our consultants and our engineer tonight vehemently oppose the applicant's interpretation of our code as related to setbacks. The applicant does not believe that there is a rear yard setback issue here. Obviously, our consultants and our engineer disagrees. I feel like this conditional use application, it's close, but it's just not there yet.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? I mean, I, you know, this board's role is to make recommendations.
Mm-hmm.
I know last time the board voted to approve the previous conditional use, Mr. Brosman reminded us, but this is not really approval or denial for this board. This is to make a recommend, I mean, that's what, in reading 28136, Planning Commission submit recommendations. So, you know, if the board, if the commission wants to make those recommendations, either in whole or in part, or however you want to do that, you know, recommend certain interpretation, or that, you know, this is the sense of the Planning Commission, I think that makes sense, and that gives the board your, your input as to the overall plan. You know, so there's two big issues that have been discussed. You could certainly make motions, you know, to recommend what the Planning Commission feels about those two big issues, or any other issue that you want to discuss and, and make recommendations on. So, I mean, that, that, and Mr. Brosman knows that he can then, if it's a SALDO provision, he, if he goes to land development, he can ask for waivers. Or if it's a zoning issue, he can go to the zoning hearing board and get relief there. I mean, I don't know whether that setback rear yard is, you know, ultimately a issue that they can't comply with, but if they can't, they can go to the zoning hearing board. So they have other routes to get relief from those two issues, but I think the private road issue raises a bunch of other issues in Damon's review letter, you know, because of the, where it intersects with the public road, and there's some separation distances. So that's sort of the, that private road, or not a private road, is sort of a basic issue that Planning Commission can weigh in on.
So, solicitor, just to formulate this as a motion, we could recommend conditional use approval subject to.
Conditions.
Let's say two conditions.
Right.
Okay.
Or you can, you can just recommend that it not be approved unless there's compliance with whatever you are seeking compliance with. I mean, it's, it's an advisory opinion, so the board's going to do what the board's going to do, you know, once the hearing starts and there's testimony put into the record. But I'll be quiet now.
No, that's, that's fine. And I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, whether we recommend approval subject to the two conditions that I spoke about, the setbacks, as well as, you know, the road being designated a private road, whether we recommend approval or we recommend denial, we still get to the same spot. So, since we, this is 2024, and I'm feeling in a positive mood, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of this matter, recommend conditional use approval, subject to the road in this development be designated a private street, as well as subject to our code 280-97B3, which stipulates that the rear yard setback would be 30 feet. Can I get a second?
Second?
Second by Golis. All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstained by Kunda. And any, anyone nay? Nay by Kim.
And na.
And na. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Motion passes. Good luck. Yeah. All right. I don't believe we have any new business. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Brubaker. On favor, or adjourned?